Dave, do you call roll?
Councilman Jennifer Powell.
Here.
Councilwoman Jo Cole.
Here.
Vice Mayor Corvone T. Perry.
Here.
Councilwoman Jo Lee.
Here.
Councilwoman Kate Schneider.
Mayor Mark Serken.
Here.
Stephen Presen.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have Tom Judy from the executive director of La Verna, who is going to do a awards presentation. There you are.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I want to thank you for your invitation to meet with me today. My name is Tom Judy. This is the Miami Valley Risk Management Association, or primarily by the acronym RFRMA. We're here as a couple of those here awards to the city. If I personally may, give you a 90-second overview of what is RFRMA. And first I will tell you what RFRMA is not. It's not an insurance. What RFRMA is, is it is a group of now 21 cities hold their resources together to fund or self-insure their losses. POOL was formed in 1988 in the midst of a very difficult insurance market where public governments were finding it possibly sometimes impossible to obtain insurance on the own market. So six cities at that time formed this POOL. And six cities from a very, very solid, 21 member cities. Cities that I believe represent the best of the best of small, big, and size cities in this region. Blue Ash joined the POOL in 1992. While POOL does things that insurance companies does, we do pay claims. We provide legal assistance to the cities and employees as needed. I believe the real value of POOL lies in the risk management loss control services that we provide and the culture that is created with the POOL. POOL effectively serves as the risk management department for its member cities. Cities that perhaps aren't able to fund their own risk management department. We provide services, such services as annual evaluation of others relative to their practices for controlling and preventing losses. We provide screening and other resources to our member states and to their employees in the areas of high planning, security, and high transparency. We provide concentration of risk management as necessary. And against accounts that they ask us to try to be ready and need that risk management department for them. The result of all this, in addition to the fact that we're composed of some of the most very well-known states in the region, but the result is that our members' loss protection far better than the industry average of the score level of this. So while we pay claims, the POOL is far more interested in providing financial claims, which brings us to why we're here. So each year, we recognize those member cities and departments of the member cities who have achieved excellence in loss control in prior years. Two Blue Ash departments, we cut, and what we do is we have to apply March 31st back to prior years. So two Blue Ash departments has to cut off payment as they were recognized for zero losses. Zero insurance losses in 2020, that's ours, the rest of our, and the police department. In addition, the police department was recognized for zero loss three consecutive years. And this is why that is celebrated by presenting this plaque to the police department with each of those three years of engagement there as they continue to achieve more years of zero losses. That's fantastic. So finally, we do provide overall awards for overall performance for our member states. Those losses are low and at a certain threshold in prior year. Blue Ash certainly has criteria as the city incurred claims losses as of the 11th of May less than the last month. That's fantastic for a city of the size of the city that has active performance that you do. And performance, this doesn't just happen. It is the result of what the state has taught the bottom to best practices in loss control. So especially, and I want to congratulate all of you and the investors who like, I want to especially, especially commend the frontline executives. Your job is to execute those best practices. So without further ado, I am glad to present this award. This is the standard excellence to that we're going to see Blue Ash for excellent performance in the year 2020.
I think it's amazing that any organization can live through that many city administrations, that many city councils, that many departments for 29 years. That's fabulous. And you've crossed over six 21 cities. That is a very small, necessary point that Rosalyn's experience. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, well, the mayor's going to have fun to take the picture also. Not to, the labor would talk to him. I see him talking about, right? Tom and I somewhat crossed paths 27 years ago. I used to work in Sydney, Ohio, and he also worked in Sydney, Ohio. So fortunate to see him through the year. Other than that, also, he said that absolutely a lot of credit is from our employees. And even within our organization, chair is a department chair in particular of the C, the risk management side of things. But it's Tom that particularly have no or little claims in the police department in this environment. Because I knew three years ago, this, you know, get challenged a lot from time to time. And so encourage you all to take it from all and thanks to you.
Okay, we're going to move on to public hearing. I would like to request a motion to bring off the table a public hearing for a concept plan to unit development on the former East Campus of the PNG site, the Blue Ash North City District, this will be coordinates 2021-03, its first read. A move?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dave, you did not say you need to do any kind of actual more, whatever, upon this.
Well, I'm reading the letter. I'm sorry. For this number 2021-03, approving a concept plan to unit development in Amsoil Mountain for a 48.9 acre mixed-use development on 11th and 3rd, retarding highway in the Blue Ash North City District.
Steve Dragon's going to give us, present this concept.
Good evening. Mr. Council, my name is Steve Dragon with Vander Park. As you know, we are the co-master developer of the Vander Park. We're also the developer of the Sherwood Innovation Center property, the former PNG facility on either side of retarding highway, on the north side of town. Will be denied also with Joe Newman with Skinnell Properties. He would, you know, be our developer partner on the proposed unit development for you to see. To start, I should briefly, our law with the property. We put the contract, property under contract with Dr. Daniel in 2007. We agreed on purchase of both the east and west campuses of Sherwood on either side of retarding highway in April of 2018. Leading up to that closing, we've done discussions with Ensemble Health Partners to re-tenant the west campus. They purchased property in November of 2018 with the intention of bringing 2,000 employees to that site after renovating and expanding the facilities over there. As you know, they continued their work in Vander Park and have started to build more and more of the base of site. Through that same period since, we began marketing the east campus, which lies on the east side of the building. It contains about 50 acres and 400,000 square feet of building for similar re-tenant opportunities. We received a variety of interest in the project and went down the road on a couple of potential users through the course of the next few years. Unfortunately, the savings law, which is in the project, seems just feasible to re-tenant. Primarily for the same reasons, the buildings on this side of the road are something older than belong to the west side of the road. They were built in phases over time, it's actually three buildings there that are 95% of the building. A little bit of Frank Stein's monster of different tiny pieces of office. I have used some type of industrial facilities that were built by private and over the course of time that were fairly detailed with operations. Just not practical to re-tenant with those users. In addition, buildings on this side of the highway have a significant amount of asbestos to take into consideration. They would have a chance to be able to make a re-tenant of the building. So as I say, I've heard a number of trips down the road with various users, several months before making the decision that just wasn't feasible to re-tenant these existing buildings there. And had the best force forward order to put the property back into private use to raise the buildings into market sites and to bring them up in sight. Over the course of the last several months, we moved back out to market with that strategy. We received a variety of interest in the franchise property from commercial type users, including mixed-use or multifamily builders, hotels, restaurants, other services that are taken there since that's actually a thing, as you guys reflected in the P U D on this front. We also began talking to Skinnell Properties. It's about their interest in developing the eastern portion of the property, like industrial use. Skinnell is a national developer based in Indianapolis to manage back there and develop those type of products. I had a moment to look at a few minutes to review that early, of Skinnell, their plans for the property. Let me first just say, you do recognize that the P U D is in front of this night, introducing some issues that the city attached with the road out of the center when we updated in 2017, in the state of the land that was driven by certain such trade issues, also concerns about low density, point of development. We believe that while we recognize this, we're certainly, this sentence is a closer evaluation here of this particular business and the opportunities that are here. It's a property that's located along the extreme left side of Blue Ash, only a half mile from Interstate 75. It's ideal situation to attract desirable investors, including high-tech manufacturing. The proximity of the interstate, particular value now, if you're going to need materials and to certain the operations of those users, which was to establish product. Also, it gives ideal access to large, high-quality employment, homeless surroundings in Blue Ash itself. The site's location along the retarding highway and its 30,000 vehicles per day are distributed for businesses. It uses to serve that community population as well as to support itself and complement the industrial development going on in this area. In the P U D, we can anchor by like industrial buildings that design to attract high-quality employers, including manufacturing, high-tech, so sales and service users. Skinnell, and we'll talk about this in just a minute, leads the site to a cycle for construction of speculative new industrial building. At the site, having these type of buildings, those that would allow the Blue Ash a chance to attract existing opportunities that are out there in the market today are practically not able to look at the rest of the patient currently with the facilities and building product that they're trying to raise in the city currently. Does that mean, like, we don't love to talk a little bit more about the types of businesses they're targeting as well as to explain what the P U D even would be necessarily possible to do?
Thanks for the interest, Steve, Mr. Mayor, also on this next year's time statement. As Steve mentioned, my name is Joe Newman with Skinnell Properties. We're a national industrial developer based in Indianapolis. And I think maybe just for starters, you know, in talking with city staff prior to our involvement in this project, you know, I think it was very clear that city's view is, community's view is this is where the employment corridor and zoning district is going to place to set to reflect those goals. We see it the same, you know, we think we have a vision very high-end industrial, campus year, high jobs, high initial show. We picked up some of the products we've built up there just to give you guys a sense of what we mean when we say, you know, higher-end industrial products. It's also been very apparent as we've done discussions with staff, with the real estate world of the community, with a number of users, that there's, there's a high degree of interest in occupying space in St. Blue Ash, employers want to be here and the types of employers that you guys want to have. The problem is that unfortunately, a lot of these, these users, whether they're, they're not far out of place expiration or they want a piece of this, have expansion use for their real estate, they typically don't have time to, kind of, they don't understand how much time they're going to need to, you know, go out and identify real estate alternatives, have space built up to their needs. I'm told that they would have to buy that space. So I think the city Blue Ash, Steve's point, is to establish a number of potential employers because the space doesn't exist. And so the alternative for this, the solution rather for that issue is speculative problems. Our company used to do exclusively gold-to-suit development. We have a user, you know, committed on the front end of your building projects to their needs. Our business has shifted over the last, last six years developing about half now. You have to do about 20, 30 minutes worth of speculative multi-time facilities like these throughout the country to sort of satisfy this sort of timing issue that we see for a number of users. You know, again, I think a lot of your neighboring communities have that product available, they have agency. And so when users come on, even if they want to get to Blue Ash, they're going to find times of the time they're going to go to where the space is available as soon as. The problem for us with developing speculative in this particular situation is that the Amsoil district restricts warehousing to not more than 50% of the total property area. And, you know, I think we can see through, you know, we understand that that happens at plan smart that we believe we can overcome that sort of restriction. But our lenders, you know, we typically put some of our equity in these projects and finance those to balance. Our lenders have a major issue with that type of broad restriction on a very common investment use. And so for us to come out and build something in speculative places with that sort of restriction, where it's, our lenders, where that pops. So to go back to what our understanding of the city's real goal is, just to create a climate base that they will have as a result. We're asking that, yes, we consider a language, sort of a standard that this property is called to, to be more of a employment standard threshold where this property has to generate that number of jobs. If quality of job or wage is a concern, we assess standard in that respect as well so that we can move forward with these types of buildings, generate the type of interest and employment that we're going to roll off of this property without this constraint. So that's what I want to share with you. I don't know what you want to.
You don't have anything right now, we're going to do this, about inviting any citizens that would like to speak on this particular subject. So I see two, and any of the rules that I agree. Mr. Mayor?
My name's Peter Moore. I live on Kendrick Street in Blue Ash. I'm formerly addressed with the Chauvin Manufacturing Corporation. Who is starting to be called, employed in the mayor's wife's business up there. And never did we have 50% of our land area in warehouse space. It seems to me if a company has to have 50% of this facility in warehouse, it's making kind of a low-value product that has to sit around for a while while somebody decides to buy it. And in this era of just in time manufacturing, having your stuff, whether it's finished product, material in process, or raw materials in warehouse space is a waste of financial resources. And I would suggest that Blue Ash doesn't need a company who's going to have 50% of the space in warehouse. You're going to have a manufacturer who will open stuff coming in, processed, going out, not lying around collecting rent. Or a bank.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? See no one, I will close the poll comments section. So typically, any questions we have for the developer, it would be appropriate to ask now. Like typically don't deliberate at the first one, but whatever, as appropriate. If there are any questions to the developer, welcome to the panel. Yeah.
I do have one question. I used to work at a facility and utilities for the west side come from the east side. Is that still going to be happening? Because you basically can travel a pipeline to the west side.
Yeah, actually, the utilities historically.
Yeah, the back there by Burns Road.
Yeah, came from the east side and certain west side. Those were separated before we finished our, our deal with Ensemble, they get their own service, so the services now, and we're separated from these. It's easy to be planning, move forward, it's all separate. Serious, I think. Certainly, you're right. Definitely.
What about the tunnel?
The tunnel remains, and we got the opportunity to agree with Ensemble if, if there are users developed on, there's residential, we can develop some kind of use that would be attracted to Ensemble, you know, that up to their employees to deal with. Go under pretty hard the highway and access any of those permanent uses that might be developed on the ground.
I have one question. But I do have one comment. We are Blue Ash because we have our standards.
One question I have is, so you're applying under a claim to development, which to simplify essentially means you can ask for an awful lot and then the flip side council has pretty easily brought that into accepted with the justice of standards. So when I look at this plan and compare it to what it used to be at that site, how, how will you tell castle that this is the best use of the later for Blue Ash? What would be your argument for that?
Again, I would say the city's land plan for the site, as it says, the vision for the site is to create this state that you're. Is for attractive office and industrial uses, but also using it to manage employees of the district. We think the opportunity is in the market now for creating an employment center on the land industrial side. I think based on the city's land plan, that the users that would be attracted to this development are in keeping with, with the, the kind of users that, that Blue Ash would like to have, the kind of job Blue Ash would like to support and treat the, the complementary uses, support value that development and also the surrounding, surrounding uses in Blue Ash. A follow-up to that is what previously was there, obviously, was Roger Dean on those spots. And on this, Roger Dean used to be there, there's more high-paying jobs there in the city. And it's, and the site's still seen as a prime opportunity for some, for landing a big business client. So if you wanted, I'm just reading right off the board, it's here, if you guys wanted to put a car wash and gas station, drive-through restaurants, hotels, and apartments, why would you want them here as opposed to many other spots in Blue Ash where they are being marketed as more rolling? Well, again, we think those are the uses that would be attractive to the potential industrial uses in the site. Support their employees, support their workers, also get them on tables to remain with Blue Ash. Yeah, I mean, that's all based on what's, what's good from your side of the table. Just what I got here is what's good for, for the city's side of the table on how this is the best place to play. Well, I guess I'll start getting into what my name was, literal comments, I'll just say the rest of the words whenever we do have a debate with the rest.
I do have a question, and I think this is more for this data of the city. How would an employer's requirement be monitored and enforced?
I think it'd be difficult. It's not typical from a zoning perspective, some sort of performance zoning standard. I wouldn't say no chance, but it certainly would be difficult. So that's why I tried to rate the code that says, okay, we envisioned no more than X percent in aggressive property, this does. And to be fair, you could have a company that might have only 10 jobs in their 50%, and then 50% warehouse, right? So there's no guarantee of food there. You try to write codes and visions, things that will create those jobs. And that was saying 10 at that time was, okay, if it's more than 50%, then become more of a warehouse operation, not a, not a manufacturing, or industrial, or something like that. So that's, that's typically how we try to do that.
Well, we have a commercial building, it's a class building, and 72,000 square feet, and we do, I guess it's partly where our building is located. So we have spaces that have different models and models, and warehouse, but in our building, a lot of the warehouse space is used not just for storing things. It's more, we have more service companies there, so we have more employees than you would expect with a larger percentage of, you know, the warehouse. But that, you know, it depends who moves in the first time and who's in all these roles and things, you know. But just kind of depends, just depends on what kind of business it's in there. But just kind of depends, just depends on what kind of business it's in there.
My question is to the, you know, you're already down here, cars, whatever. They can't drive through this. I'm really very true. Do you have any confirm that the company was over there and take over the subsequent area? Number one, number two is that they tried to uh, the little hotel, we are to somebody's going to put another hotel in the park. And somebody was gonna put down a hotel in the downtown area and he rejected. So are you considering this, all these things? What do you want to do? The first question was, first question was, any improvements you have for any of this that you mentioned? That you tried to bring here? Bring to that? Definitely.
On the industrial side, yeah, we primarily speculative, uh, to start with the timing. We have had conversations and continue to have conversations with users that are interested in the site. Uh, I don't think we are free in this public setting. Uh, but there are specific users that are interested, okay? Very attractive to the city from an employment perspective. Uh, we don't get any specifically, we don't get any other specific users who we have extensive interest in. Yes, private users as well. And on the hotel side, things seem to, it's a strong interest in, uh, a hotel in this location. Uh, if it's possible to, we're actually all of us to be here today.
Thank you.
Does anybody ask any questions? All right. Uh, I'm gonna ask for motion to close this panel here. Second, on favor.
I.
Thank you, Mr. Adam, Mr. New. Uh, prepare a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of twenty twenty mark. So, all in favor?
I.
Any communications to counsel day?
There are untitled.
Any reports from outside agencies? Seeing none. Mayor's report will be entered into the public record on July of twenty twenty one. I have a motion to accept the financial report from July of twenty twenty one.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
Let's move to here, Mr. Citizens. All right, Mr. Duncan. All right, we'll look at committee reports. Finance to administration. I have a list, so we'll work on the list. Jamie, please read resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty five by title.
Providing for amendments within the twenty twenty one annual appropriation resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty two.
Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty five. Okay. Any discussion? There are none. Jamie, please go over.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul.
Yes.
Councilor Zerwanka.
Yes.
Mayor Serpen.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Two three resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty six by title.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development, we have approved tacky timing.
Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty six. Okay. Any discussion?
Just one thing, you know, um, I, while overall I liked the project, I think that we've been sliding too far on how much incentive we give to projects. It wasn't that long ago where it was typically, they said we would give the equivalent of one year's worth of the earnings tax to provide. So the new project generated a hundred fifty thousand dollars of new earnings tax. We probably give it instead of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It sets in some obviously could be made for, for truly big or transported special projects. It's just not that it's the last couple of years, but we've been slightly further and further on that where it's really not taking much of anything to get us to give incentives well beyond one times the new annual earnings tax. Uh, so it's not taking much to get us to do that. And the, the the amount that we're doing before is going up a lot. In this case, the project will generate a hundred twenty five thousand of new uh, uh, city earnings tax for us per year and we're being asked to give instead of five hundred thousand dollars. That's four times what we're gonna be providing. I just think we're sliding too far on this and that we're just gonna continually be giving away uh, a whole lot more money on these incentives if we keep going for some of this.
I think, I think the last couple of years have been a little unusual. I, I don't know that we necessarily slide and deal with the realities right now of merchant girls. Any businesses. Points. So, point taken.
I think the other supplement to that is, um, typically deals for more than two years. But those were often for what I'd call lease in place. Um, what we've done, we've had a couple of deals in the last couple of years where the company is buying and investing. And so there's more value of companies taking root versus a company that's just simply doing an eight year lease in an existing office building. And so and, and, and I don't use very sliding value. I think you're getting more permits out of some of the deals that you're, you're signing, for instance, this one, you've got a company that's buying multiple buildings, multiple sites. You know, to be kind of fine, you're getting your hooks into them, you're not getting less mobile. Some of the other deals, even if you're putting these in, which were typically either half to two years, they were signing leases. They're going to break the lease a little bit easier. So this, this has been much more bad. This is another way to look at that.
You're also purchasing partial street also. Any other comments, sir? Counselor? Any none? Jamie, please go over.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman McCall.
Yep.
Councilwoman Paul. Yes. Mayor Serpen. Yes. Six, but yes, this one.
Jamie, uh, two three resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty seven. Quick question, councilor? I mean, this is, this is the next two resolutions are basically the same item. And they're in super. Okay. Uh, uh, dash thirty seven by title.
Approving a petition for special assessments for specialty, special energy improvement projects under a file revised code, chapter seventeen ten, and plans for public improvements and including the necessity of acquiring, constructing and improving certain public improvements in the city of Blue Ash, Ohio, in cooperation with the suburban communities' energy special improvement district.
Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty seven. Okay. Any discussion?
You want to discuss them all together?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 I guess that's, that's.
This is resolution twenty twenty one dash thirty eight.
We already, we're already there. Just, I'm on the process. And you can talk about both that, you can, I don't want to miss something. We'll, we'll keep the, keep them separate, but we'll discuss that as a whole. That's fine.
Yeah, just the ultimate comment I had is when this came up in prior years, I asked a question about, was there any cost risk in the city? The answer was no. Uh, just so everybody can understand, we're just a community here, just a cost risk in the city.
That's correct. Any other comments? Good talking. It really keeps our businesses on their toes and updating themselves. I think there's just things. Yeah. So move to, uh, uh, move to the dot resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty seven. So, I think I already covered that. Yeah. Any, uh, further discussion? Seeing none. Jamie, please go over all thirty seven.
Councilwoman Paul. Yes. Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider. Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Serpen.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
All right. Jamie, please read resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty eight by title.
Determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Blue Ash, Ohio, in cooperation with the suburban communities' energy special improvement district.
Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty eight.
Okay.
Discussion? Same discussion. Any none? Jamie, please go over.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider. Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul.
Yes.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Mayor Serpen. Yes. Seven, yes.
Jamie, please read resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty nine by title.
Authorizing and approving cooperative agreement by and among the city, that Blue Ash, Tierport, Ludlun, Charro, Springdale, Sycamore, Township, Sims Township Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., Inc., doing business as suburban communities' energy special improvement district. Petro's Pigs Finance Titleing Trust and the owner, providing to the financing of special energy improvement projects in the city of Blue Ash, Ohio, authorizing and approving special assessment agreements by and between the city, the treasurer of Hamilton County, Ohio, the owner, the purchaser, Petro's Pigs Finance Titleing Trust and the Blue Ash, Tierport, Ludlun, Charro, Springdale, Sycamore Township, Sims Township Energy Special Improvement District, Inc., doing business as suburban communities' energy special improvement district, Inc., and letting special assessments to the purpose of acquiring, constructing and improving certain public improvements in the city of Blue Ash, Ohio, in cooperation with the suburban communities' energy special improvement district, Inc.
You covered all bases. You're in your teeth. There you go. Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirty nine. Any discussion? Any none? Jamie, please go over.
Councilwoman Schneider. Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Mayor Serpen.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Jamie, please read resolution number twenty twenty one dash forty by title.
Resolution to accept the material terms of the one on five subdivision settlement pursuant to the one on five agreement of understanding, consistent with the terms of the July twenty first, twenty twenty one National Book of the Oi settlement agreement, and to authorize the city's solicitor and or city manager to execute the related participation agreement.
Move to about resolution number twenty twenty one dash forty.
Okay.
Any discussion? I just had a quick question. For uses, intervention, treatment, education, and public services. Are these things that we're gonna have to set up? Or are they, are there, we have progress in place that we can use this twenty four second, yes?
Um, I thought, you know, but, um, project that something we, we may be making contributions to a region effort. Um, and or we may pay for our share of something which our business partners participate in or something like that.
Any other sort of questions? It looks like the estimate, I heard a ton of ways they were between a hundred twenty and a hundred seventy thousand. So it's a nice cool word for it. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Jamie, please go over.
Councilwoman Paul. Yes. Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman McCall.
Yes.
Councilman Lee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Javary.
Yes.
Councilman Zerwanka.
Yes.
Mayor Serpen.
Yes.
Seven, yes.
A lot of merit. Are you tired? It's a lot. Combined, we'll move to parts of recreation to share with you.
Jamie, could you please read resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty one? Authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services contract for the rental and installation on a temporary ice train as part of the the dot resolution number twenty twenty one. Seven. Uh, this resolution, great discussion, obviously. Is it, is this longer than we did last year or is this the same timeframe?
It's the same. It's forty eight days of operating. First two years ago, about seventy five, we realized that us a couple of weeks in late January or early February wasn't worthwhile. It's here to reduce costs. I'm going into twenty twenty. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna, as I have in prior years, I'm not gonna vote for this one. This has been a big hole in the budget for something that is ultimately accomplishing nothing. If we went back two years ago to the last year, we had before the pandemic, we had revenues of seventy four thousand expenses of two hundred and six thousand dollars. Then if you look at the time that it's in the distance, well, it's high state. You can literally walk down the street with a high state. So we're, we're spending, we're putting a heavy subsidy into something that is already offered and available to anybody who wants to do it. So we're, we're putting this big hole in the budget to accomplish nothing. And then if we went to last year, now last year was pandemic, but we also knew that when we voted for it last year, revenues were thirty seven thousand, expenses two hundred and three thousand, so we're, and we're setting five or six dollars for every dollar that came in. It wasn't looking for a whole lot of days, the days that was open. It was only open for a few hours and then during those few hours it was open, there were serious floods because of the pandemic. Well, let's go around the last few weeks. We're back into pandemic. We've got Steve Fauci out there. Uh, back to his mask on lockdown. That's where it ends. Uh, so uh, I'm afraid that this year would be just as bad as last year. Uh, and this is for a program where even in the normal year, we're burning a big hole in the budget to do something that to, to duplicate service that the private sector offers right after something like this.
Well, the other thing I'd say about this, if you see the stories of the families that, that go there, enjoy, it's worth it every day. It really is. I mean, it's hard. It really is. And I don't recall the city being in the, in the business to make a profit for entertainment. This is just a good thing for the Blue Ash. And anybody that'll say it that way, well, I'm sorry that it does weirdness.
I think also the supportive activity in the restaurants and the other, you know, the beauty tours that we have that you just like anymore. A slower time of year for the women's, but I hope that that will be, you know, benefit this one.
Well, if one of us smiles on people's faces, we could just take the one hundred forty five thousand dollars and have a voting on here, put it in a helicopter and then fly to dance where there was so many parks. You'll see a lot of smiles in those places. And you're rich. Give them money away. That's, that's the same time, rich, same loss, does that?
Yeah, I guess, I guess in the intent of the US, we, um, you know, everything that you, uh, we spend in the city is a, is a program decision in return, in so to speak. Not necessarily becoming profit, but where are you getting from it? And Joe hit the nail on the head. When a decision was made, I think for years, what community oriented activity, yes, we can give people money, but the idea is to have a community activity. It's the toughest time of year to have a program activity. The sun's more easier to have. Jogo on the lawn and farmers markets, which are community activities. It's just a little bit harder, unfortunately, it's a little bit pressure. Um, you know, I know we challenge ourselves, what other things can we do to some sort of ice sculpture event or whatever. It's, it's just, it's just a difficult thing. Um, and so that's the idea is, is to try to provide a program for the community um, that they can enjoy and gather around with their fellow community members and what have you. It's not going to have to turn out of a Friday night concert or something like that. Putting in perspective what it is, you're trying something, you know, in an off season. It does help the restaurants, they do appreciate it. And as that center there grows, um, you know, I think it will continue to help provide some energy to that area.
Other comment is, I mean, everything the city does, all this happens. Our memories, we subsidize, we materialize. Police, fire, activities, parks and red, whatever, streets, you name it. They're all benefits to our residents and most of our business people. They're all the reasons why those people want to be here. So, you know, I think this is a good benefit, especially in a weird time.
I think, right?
I remember some last year too. I was speaking to a community. I all gave around there that actually minds. actually want to?
Yeah, okay, there's, uh, a lot of the activities that the community, not us, not the city, supports. Yeah, we start a little fee here and there for the rest center. The pool probably doesn't make a profit, like, ten stores do, or the ball, or the basketball courts. Doubt the policeman profit. Fire department makes a profit. It's like a year. It's a cost. Some are more than others. At time of the year, I think, better to put down there, use them there. Also there, just doesn't exist. After all these years, it is not perfect, but it is. Just to note, well, everybody made great points towards that line, I appreciate that. Um, it draws about seventeen thousand people over the course of time. So our restaurants truly appreciate, especially last year, that going into last year, the year that they had, they're all, you know, kind of waiting on data about that for us to make that decision out of that. Because that foot traffic is very, very. Like, those are, it's true, there's restaurants, they're paying, paying for those buildings. And the concept of our family, David mentioned, one of the challenges of this, how we program the part three sixty-five on my super bar, those spaces and migrations, certain parts that tend to shut down the manager. And this is just a very nice bit.
Isn't there a widget that's this year? Just that down in the summary, there's some, why do you make it more? Jamie, please go to roll. Councilwoman Powell?
No.
Councilman Lee?
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Javerry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider? Yes. Mayor Serpenc?
Yes.
Seven, six, yes, this one.
Thank you. Move to Vice Mayor Javerry, planning this one.
Hey, hey, um, I have a motion. And a motion seeking a public hearing for Thursday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven oh five PM. To consider an application to designate the property at forty-five hundred as one during the government, A U D district. Anybody has any questions on this? Any second, second, sir. Any questions, sir? If you're not.
I. I have a question. Any questions? It's all good. As a person, we have a first committee.
All right, Jamie, please hear your resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, by title, please.
Amending resolution number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the twenty twenty-one payment program for the unit prices as shown on the attached page summary.
Move to that resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two.
Okay.
And this is, uh, moving on the long term, right?
Yeah, the bridge is on Carver and Anderson Way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which ones were there, I'm sorry?
At Anderson Way and Carver, this was a part of the program. And it was, uh, these were added plans to, to prepare on this, to be ready. On the surface. Any others? Jamie, please go to roll.
Vice Mayor Javerry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider? Yes. Councilwoman Powell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul?
Yes.
Councilwoman Zerwanka?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Serpenc?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Okay, we'll move to this later in the business.
Uh, I don't have much to say, other than, um, it's possible, one of the September meetings, we will have an update. We will on the town square part, uh, designs, you know, we continue to have things that Brian, who's seen or having meetings regularly, so I think one of the two meetings will see an update on some of the design and everything. Another thing I have, I'm coordinating coming in large, you see the line about project isn't expert, it's still more disability of being under by some of the demolition going on, utility work. And unfortunately, the big project, the gas pipeline project continues to be instead of replacing our project, cannot be weathered.
Nothing to nightmare.
No. These leaders, doesn't matter. Eric Poppy? Congratulations on your old tax department, another swing on. It's like thirty-seven years, we're forty-three years. For it.
Yeah, as Dave mentioned, uh, the highway project, uh, is beginning. The demolition of the two gas stations that's begun. Uh, Speedway is, uh, well underway, uh, deploying gas tanks, starting on the marathon side. The, uh, utility work is, uh, that you're seeing out there is the gas line relocation and, uh, this is staying, but all kind of relocation as well. The actual roadwork should begin, uh, in September, so that's when, uh, all the sun begins. So, uh, I did want to mention that, uh, you know, those who have been watching or observing the big dig, we have, uh, Osbornia, the pipe has been repaired, uh, and they're doing a restoration now, the parents, uh, this is, uh, manual structure going in there. Um, and, uh, we should hopefully have it done within, uh, next, uh, three weeks or so. That's why I, Ryan Cruz, I just want to comment to, I just wanted to, uh, thank you, great, that's a great example of partnership. It was really successful, um, it was a way to hide that sun apart, and no longer residency, you know, if they officially move that and, uh, left the site pretty much in shape for making people do that. Uh, every show was sold out, so to them, it was a major success. Um, obviously with progress, searching and such, where they set things up. It could have given them a long, great long, that it would have liked to, but, uh, they just could not stay on the site. I suppose to be, so appreciate the voice support from police, fire, public works, parks, grounds, and that, for, uh, for example. It's, and that's T-Mark. And then also helping guys have to Sunday nights, uh, talk to townspeople, and so with that. So man, so I took a year off last year, we did a virtual event. Uh, but we are once again, uh, supporting them, they will be at Townsquare, so I'll just say whether it's perfect, so.
Thank you. Dan? Yeah?
Particularly on our programs and community development, but a lot of you could probably notice that many of our employers in town have signs out front, uh, trying to find the workforce. It's, it's your own type of companies right now. Some of them have asked us for assistance, and so we are going to host a job scare at Cooper Creek on Thursday, September ninth. And we have room for twenty-five companies to participate. Um, it's a hundred thousand feet to, to get a table and a couple of chairs. We already have, uh, twelve, thirteen who signed up, but if you're here for many companies or seeing any that you think might want to participate, we are limited to office and, um, not taking hospitality or retail companies at this point, since we only have twenty-five spots available in the room. But we hopefully will be able to attract a good crowd of job seekers and help some of our companies fill those, and these slots they have, and increase our earnings tax.
Thank you.
Mayor, you know, just taking that, and that, uh, when you said that, that reminded me, uh, you know, we, we face labor shortages all summer with our summer half. And I'm sure you've seen, we're reducing hours even further. And this week, um, our office staff has moved out to take, um, some of the lifeguard chairs, Dane, that's very American. As a lot of our lifeguards turn back to comments, so, you know, kudos after them to cover, become lifeguards that they probably haven't done since, say, they were seventeen or eighteen themselves. Um, but, you know, that's, that's the nature of, of a lot of our employees, in particular, like, like, I like that since they started with the labor shortage.
I hope we get a table, right? We get a table. Hey?
I think you can put your hand in.
Great chair, I do. Councilor? I do, I want to, uh, uh, because I don't think it's going to be set up, it's loss prevention, risk management, crime and home fire, fish, uh, any game. Um, when it's done well, you don't really really feel, when it's done very poorly, they impact the game in a very negative way. And so having more from the, for the organization, uh, is involved, loss prevention and risk management. And have this David pointed out, this Tom pointed out, the frontline employees implementing the policies that get you engaged in the public, and the more engaged public, the more opportunities there are to be super. Uh, and to have the police in this environment not having losses in their years. Um, you know, as you achieve what, legal advising the city, I'm proud of that. I'm proud of what David and Sherry and Kelly and Scott and Chris and Brian and Gordon and all those people in there and Neil, all they do to keep, uh, to keep the city out of trouble. And it's not because it happens by, I'll say, it's just what happens, because it just happens, it happens because it's intentional, that because people are aware of it, and it happens because, um, I might say, some of those people listen to their legal advice at times, too. So I may throw that in there as well. So I just wanted to say, that is, that is an achievement that ought not to be understated or undervalued or under understood, if I may make the board. Uh, again, I, I ask you, just think about it, an official in a game, and when it's done well, you really know the feeling, and when it's done poorly, maybe negatively, and I just want to say that I'm proud to be part of that organization, and part of the administration, and, and, and the, uh, the department, to take that seriously. Listen, by, by like a call, you know, they don't, you know, just kind of tabloid, you know, Brian, fix it. I have, uh, there are other clients who say, fix it. And there are, there are clients who say, well, let's take a little different approach. And I appreciate the fact that I'm part of that organization's efforts. And, you know, council, where that's important, achievement to be, to be happy to accomplish. Thank you. All right. The?
Here, taking back from that comment, David's still back in culture, all over administration. That's what makes it, it's beautiful. Also, the opera, wonderful, if they come back again this year. And, and nothing but compliments from lots of neighbors and friends, tended to the concert, or the performances, excuse me. Sometimes we sort of, uh, when you operate, definitely.
Thank you.
Uh, just to repeat what Jamie was just saying, the opera was amazing, although I needed reimbursement for my, I see that sometimes. It's partly a reflection, I think, of what brought, um, one of our sons and his wife and grandchildren. And I just love the idea of being able to, all of the people that probably had never seen her in the opera before. And I really, I hope that I'll see this with sports donation, it's really a wonderful thing to do for our community. Uh, that's about it.
Yes? I think additional. Gerald?
Fair. I have a, uh, have you sent me the email? At the stadium? They are, uh, they are asking uh, he moves some of the flower products and some of the memorial things that they want to move from the front to the back, nearby the Hudson. So they asked me, uh, let us know, they, they want to know where to move those flowers, or whatever we have to move to. Do you think we need to send letters to each one in that department? Or you want me to go over there and talk to them, or how we can pursue that suggestion?
So, uh, I thought your request was to let that age away. And where, and I thought maybe you were going to make that contact, but I'm happy to let them know that at any time, if you want them to allow any planting, it's from how to enter the site, if you want to do that.
Age away is not very, so, like, sometimes they just, sometimes they put it down, uh, they don't send any letters to everyone, they just put them somewhere, uh, in, uh, next door or in Facebooks. So I.
So who must have made the request to you, maybe?
There are some, two ladies nearby, uh, nearby, very.
I, if you could just make that aware, I don't see us sending lunch to the whole neighborhood and saying, break the beds, but if you could just make the few folks who, who talk to you aware that they can go ahead and do that, that'd be great.
Okay. If I need something to happen.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, that, that's it, then, I just want to make a comment, just like, when he has done Oprah, just wonderful program. Everybody enjoyed it. And, uh, I hope they come back.
I think all programming this year has been great, uh, a lot of compliments, that's the one thing I swear you're the most compliments about is, is, uh, Parks and Red, sorry to the fire department, public works, police, but Parks and Red, it's on the back of the maps. Um, I did want to thank the fire department, I spent part of a shift, uh, a week ago, and saw some amazing people, and, um, uh, had to watch some military, they actually turned up here, let me sweat, uh, after about ten minutes in the hot sun. It was incredible, they gave me a saw, I don't know what they're thinking. I had a laugh, and just saw some good people, we are very, thank you very much. Um, Kevin set up a, with NAMM, which is the National Alliance on Mental Healthiness, at the North Fire Station, September fourteenth at seven PM, presentation, all in our own rooms. So it can be the community, uh, that we can get there. Uh, it's very well timed, it's only an hour. But, uh, thank you very much, Kevin, for reaching out and getting that set up. That is all I have, um, so I entertain the motion through, uh, Kevin?
Sure.